Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City West Bend Licensing Board for April 17th. Note that we do have a quorum and we have three items on the agenda, the first being the Licensing Board minutes, the regular Licensing Board minutes from March 6th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned second and any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, so that we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to agenda items for consideration, number two, a Class B beer slash six-month license for the West Bend Athletic Association Dock Gancharang Complex at 2,500 Country Creek Circle for April 17th through October 17th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned second and any comments or corrections on that? Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, so that we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And number three is a Class B beer, Class C wine license for the Grun Hexi LLC. The agent is some name that I can't say and it's 705 Village Greenway Suite 101B.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned second and any questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, so that we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for the Licensing Board, adjourned by the call of the Chair.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the, sorry, the Finance Committee for April 17th, 2023. Looking for approval of the minutes and I don't have time on those. Did we get minutes with those? Doesn't have any dates for that. Anyways, moving on. Moving on to agenda item for consideration, item number one, resolution accepting a donation from Marie Jors.
Good evening. Marie Jors, probably a name we're all familiar with, should be familiar with, longtime public servant with Washington County Sheriff's Department, retired as a deputy. Our Officer Nathan Mahoney provided a presentation for Ms. Jors and her women's group. They were very impressed with our young Officer Mahoney and provided us with the $30 donation as a way of thanks. Certainly not required, not even requested, but we would like to use that money towards our crime prevention programs and supplies in their honor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just like to thank Ms. Jors for her donation. It will be appreciated.
Thank you both, man. Ditto on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Resolution number two, accepting a donation from Matinee Corporation for Smoke Alarm Program.
Good evening. We have for you a request or a resolution to accept a donation from the Matinee Corp, another corporate citizen that was supportive of our services and decided to give us a donation, so we talked about it and we're going to put it towards our smoke detector program. I brought along Captain Kenny Asland tonight just to give you a brief, brief?
Three minutes.
Presentation on our smoke detector program and then you can act on the resolution.
So I just first want to say thank you to Matinee Corporation for their donation and thank you to Chief Kudick for placing the funds in the Smoke Alarm Install Program. There's been a number of donors towards this Smoke Alarm Install Program, not just the smoke alarms, but carbon monoxide alarms as well and combustible gas alarms, so including the Red Cross, Home Depot, our Savior's Lutheran Church, Mayor Jenkins, Strakota Foundation, ALPLA, State Farm Insurance and West Bend Mutual Insurance. The Smoke Alarm Installation Program, so in 2022, we installed smoke alarms in 43 residences in our fire protection area. That consisted of 260 smoke alarms, 42 carbon monoxide alarms and 11 combustible gas alarms. Why are the smoke alarms important? Just because with the materials used, modern furnishings along with lightweight wood construction gives a family only a few minutes to escape in the event of a fire. National Fire Protection Association reports that three out of every five civilian home fire deaths occur in homes with no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms. In 2022, there were 53 civilian home fire deaths in Wisconsin. That's a 10-year high. So far in 2023, there are 30 civilian home fire deaths in Wisconsin. We're not even halfway through the year and we're over halfway to our civilian fire death total. So just a reminder for smoke alarms, they should be installed inside each sleeping area, outside the sleeping areas, every level of the home, test them monthly and replace them after 10 years. Our carbon monoxide alarms, so outside the sleeping areas, every level of the home, test them monthly and those are to be replaced every seven years. And the combustible gas alarms, every level of the home, test them monthly and replace them every five years. So again, just want to thank you to all of our donors who have made West Bend safer. Every year, we've increased our smoke alarm installs and I believe we have a number of residences here in town that are a lot safer. And again, we've got a lot of people over 65 years old with mobility issues that we get in these homes and install these alarms. So thank you for the resolution.
Second.
Second, just want to thank those donors as well. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you. Kenny does a great job with the program and that's why I wanted him to do the presentation tonight. Usually Kenny wears what we call the Class C uniform, which is dressed down with no badges on, so that's why I wore this tonight because I thought that's what Kenny would be wearing. Kenny decided to wear the Class B uniform with the badge, so he showed me up.
Actually, it was the guy between us that told me to wear this.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Okay, third resolution, accepting donations to the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Department. Take it away, Mr. Yench.
Well, good evening and thank you. This evening, we have several very impressive donations that will help support activities and events within our parks system. The first donation this evening of $2,500 was donated by Bank 59 for the sponsorship of the 2023 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. The second donation of $1,250 was donated by Dielectric Manufacturing Incorporated for sponsorship of the Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. The third donation of $2,500 was donated by the West Bend Community Foundation's West Bend Mutual Insurance Company Charitable Fund for sponsorship of the 2023 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. The fourth donation of $1,250 donated by Delta Defense for the sponsorship of the Dirty Ninja Mud Run. The next donation is a value of $5,450 by the Gears Group Incorporated, that's our local biking group, and that's the pedal biking group. Donation of trail grooming equipment to be used at Regner Park and Glacier Blue Hills. And the last donation for this evening of $500 was donated by Kristoff E. and Leanne R. Jenkins for the All Ability Playground. So a huge thank you to these donors and these sponsors that help support events and programs and projects and future projects in our community. Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second and ditto on that, on that, thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number four, authorizing the appropriation of funds to DNR Urban Forestry Grant.
Thank you. We received the $25,000 reimbursement for the urban forestry, for the urban forestry grant. That reimbursement was deposited into a revenue account. This evening, we are requesting that those monies are transferred to an expenditure account that we can use for future tree planting programs or our annual tree charity contract.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further questions or considerations for Mike?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Resolution number five, resolution to accept Wisconsin Department of Administration Neighborhood Investment Fund Grant second payment. Jess.
This is the second payment of three that we're planning to receive from the Department of Administration, going to support the Downtown Riverwalk project.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second, any questions for Jess? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item number six, award quote 2301 Real Estate Services for HSIP01.
Good evening, thank you. In 2021, the city entered in a state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation in order to plan for improvement at three local signalized intersections, Main Street and Decorah Road, Main Street and Paradise Drive and Paradise Drive and Silverbrook Drive. So we hired a consultant to do this design and with the design, they determined that we're going to need some right-of-way acquisition and easement acquisition in order to complete the project. And so we staff put together requests for proposals. We received those requests in order to hire a consultant to proceed with the real estate acquisition for the city in order to complete the project. This is a project that is 90% funded through the HISAP program, which is run by the DOT and it's about a total of $1.9 million and the city's share would be about $191,000 for the construction of this project. So we received three proposals for the real estate acquisition. The first one only included the appraisal portion but not actual negotiation and acquisition, so that was non-responsive to our request. The second proposal included the two portions of the appraisal and the negotiation, however, they did not provide draft agreement that we require with those RFPs and their schedule also didn't seem to follow the needs of the program. So we ended up with the last proposal from the Highland Group and this proposal was complete and showed a good understanding of the process and what is at stake for the real estate acquisition. So based on our review of the proposal, we recommend award of the contract for the real estate services for the HISAP01 project to the Highland Group in the amount not to exceed $65,440 for their services.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second, go ahead, Jed.
Max, I understand that why the other two were rejected, that there's a significant difference between commercial property consultants' price, the Highland Group's price, Highland happened to be the highest. Now, under the rules, neither you or Ian can address this, could the city have chosen to issue this again because of the defects? If so, was that not a possibility because of a timeline? Would that have been, you're nodding your head, there's a problem with the timeline?
Well, yes, this is a project, we were targeting to have our final plan specs and estimates in November and if we were to rebid, that would probably not leave enough time for a consultant to perform all the acquisition. At this time, their schedule is for them to have everything completed sometime in October, early October, but if we were to rebid, we would have to give the one-week notification and wait for the next council meeting to come back and then we would have chewed up another month or maybe more out of the timeline for this.
Good enough, thanks.
Well, and this is, this is services, so there's not the same requirements as public construction. I mean, we're not bound to take the lowest bidder, the same way we are, the lowest responsible bidder, the same way we are with public construction. It's, this is more of a purchasing policy issue than it is statutory requirements for the, for the contract. We could have just gone to one, one vendor and negotiated with them had we so chosen to.
Okay.
I would like to add something to this. We tried to cast a wide net for consultants on this. However, on all DOT-funded projects, we've seen that consultants are very busy with the amount of money that was injected with the bill in 2002, I mean, 2022, sorry. We've seen a lot of projects coming, a lot of new projects being funded and everybody's busy. So I am not surprised with not getting a lot of bids back and I will add that we do have two STPU projects for the years 24 and 25 with Main Street from Progress to Humor and the resurfacing of Paradise Drive from Main Street to Indiana. I sent the request to 269 email addresses, that was a total of 90 companies and I have, on one of them, one company responded and on the other, two companies responded. So DOT told us that they've seen that with not getting a lot of consultant responding because they are so busy with other projects. So I don't think that rebidding would yield better results, not only on price, but on the responses that we would get.
Okay, thank you, Max. Any more questions? Go ahead, Mr.
Max, have we dealt with Highland before?
Yes.
Or we have?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
They've also done a lot of work with the county.
Okay, any, any further questions for Max? We do have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Very much, Max, appreciate it. And adjourned by the call of the Chair, just, just one quick note, I really appreciate Mayor Jenkins the opportunity to be the Finance Chair for the last six months for our longest tenure.
No problem, you've been doing a pretty good job.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll say good evening. I would like to call to order the City West Bend Common Council Meeting for April 17th. Note that we do have a quorum with all aldermen present accounted for, please join me to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll note that we have 19 items on our agenda, the first being approval of the minutes. The first up is Common Council Regularly Meeting Minutes from March 20th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alan and Model, any questions or correction on that one? Hearing none, all those in favor, so that we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the Common Council Regularly Meeting Minutes from April 3rd.
Motion to second.
Thank you, I'll give that to Kayla and Alan. Any questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, so that we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we have under Presentations, our Arbor Day Proclamation, if we could have a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Dolnick and Alan. All those in favor with proclamations, just saying that we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this proclamation so reads, "Whereas Arbor Days observe worldwide, celebrating the role of trees in our lives. Trees are among Wisconsin's most beautiful natural resources. The demands on our environment and resources necessitate an increased awareness of ecological values. And whereas West Bend has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 38 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation for its tree planting ways, care of the, care of the urban forest and high-quality forestry program. Now therefore, I, Kristoff E. Jenkins, Mayor of the great city of West Bend, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day here in the city of West Bend. And I urge all citizens to support Arbor Day in the efforts to plant and protect our trees and woodlands for the well-being of present and future generations and support our city's urban forestry program." Thank you. And we'll move on to our consent agenda, considering items two through nine.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Alan. Any questions on these? Hearing none, all those in favor, so that we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we're on to our agenda items for consideration. First up is a resolution honoring Randall Kayler. If we could have a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I'll give that to Burkequist and Butchlick. All those in favor of the resolution, so that we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and I'll read this into the record. "Whereas Randall Kayler was elected as District 4 Alderman in April 2011 to April 2015 and then appointed in May 2020 to fulfill a vacant term through April 2021 and was elected to serve from April 2021 to April 2023, faithfully representing his constituents in the city of West Bend for seven years. And whereas during his tenure as Alderman, he served on the Board of Public Works, Finance Committee, Park and Recreation Committee and Traffic Safety Commission. And whereas Randall Kayler exemplified outstanding leadership as District 4 Alderperson, devoting a substantial portion of his time for the betterment and enrichment of the citizens of West Bend. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Randall Kayler and expresses its deep appreciation for his dedicated service to the city of West Bend, passed and approved today, April 17th." Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you. And next up is a resolution honoring Tracy Erns, if we could have a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. I'll give that to Model and Singtime. All those in favor, so that we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tracy, I was waiting for you to oppose that one yourself. All right, this resolution so reads, "Whereas Tracy Erns was elected as District 6 Alderperson from April 2021 to April 2023, faithfully representing her constituents in the city of West Bend for two years. And whereas during her tenure, she served on the Board of Public Works, Finance Committee, Solid Waste and Recycling Committee and Tourism Commission. And whereas Tracy Erns exemplified outstanding leadership as District 6 Alderperson, devoting a substantial portion of her time for the betterment and enrichment of the citizens of West Bend. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Tracy Erns and expresses its deep appreciation for her dedicated service to the city of West Bend, passed and approved today's date, April 17th." And for this last resolution, I'm going to pass the time over to our Council President, Alderman Butchlick.
Okay, we have a resolution honoring Kristoff E. Jenkins.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carried. "Whereas Kristoff E. Jenkins was elected to his first term as Mayor in April 2020, faithfully serving the city of West Bend for one full term. And whereas during his tenure, the city of West Bend has achieved significant economic growth and improved overall financial stability. And whereas Kristoff E. Jenkins exemplified outstanding leadership as Mayor, devoting a substantial portion of his time for the betterment, enrichment of the cities of West Bend. Now therefore, be it resolved that Common Council of the City of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Kristoff E. Jenkins and express its deep appreciation for his dedicated service to the city of West Bend." Thank you very much, Chris, for your time.
And we're on to number 13, which is a CSM-23-005, a two-lot certified survey map, creating a lot and outlot located on the south side of Forge Place, east of South River Road by the city of West Bend. We'll have a brief presentation of our business and development planner, Jim.
Thank you. So the Plan Commission back in April of this year approved the two-lot CSM. This CSM creates a nine-acre parcel along with a two-acre outlot. This is to help facilitate for the development of the Kettle Moraine Metals Product Development on the south side of Forge Place. So we're asking the Council to approve the certified survey map for consideration to finalize this project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, let's see, I'll give that to Alan and Burkequist. Any questions for Jim? Hearing done, all those in favor, so that we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to reports. First up is a report by Alderman Burkequist regarding the Airport Commission meeting held on April 6th.
All right, thank you, sir. The last meeting of the Airport Commission was held on April 6th. Mark and Julie had set aside two and a half hours for this meeting.
That's right, two and a half hours. Okay.
Did you use it all?
Yes, we did. So we were going to just go over and review municipal code as it relates to airport operations. So if you need to go to the restroom or want to grab a snack, do it now because we got some things to cover. Okay?
Okay.
Ah, just kidding, just kidding. But hey, if you really want to do, go over the municipal code, I have a copyright here, so you can just ask me for it. Okay? Just remember, it's still a work in progress. But we went through a revision, which was started by Mark Petrovich and Mike Shaw, the airport manager, to bring our airport in line with current FAA and Wisconsin Bureau of Aeronautics Standards. Some of the changes centered on operation of vehicles and pedestrians on runways, taxiways and ramps. Chapter 19.21 dealt with general operations and rules involving things like air shows and hot air balloons and radio-controlled aircraft and...
Even drones.
So we reviewed the definition of non-airworthy, disabled or abandoned aircraft. That was interesting. We discussed parking on the property and hangar use. This included rules for occupants, commercial operations and our right to inspect buildings when we see fit, all with the intent to be fair and evenly applied to all those people who use the airport. Exactly two and a half hours later, we scheduled the next meeting for June 13th and adjourned. Any questions? You guys were worried, weren't you? Two and a half hours.
Wait.
Thank you, Alderman Burkequist. Next up is a report by Alderman Allen regarding the Downtown Bid Board meeting.
On April 4th, the Bid Board met. We reviewed the meeting minutes and financial report. They were both reviewed and approved. We reviewed the downtown landscaping contract with Scott's Landscaping and that was going, we just, we decided to table that until next meeting, pending some additional information from Scott's Landscaping. We reviewed the Roots and Branches quote and that was approved. Administrator Shambow provided an update on the downtown master plan and the bid's role in that plan. The bid appreciates Administrator Shambow's update. Downtown marketing plan was reviewed. This is relative to the project that's currently ongoing. Watch for signs and billboards coming soon to areas around you. We also announced the construction project call. The first call was on April 12th, last week, Wednesday. Those will occur every Wednesday until the project is complete. Those calls are handled on a broadcast-only con call. So, and then finally, we announced the free flower orders through the Roots and Branches for businesses in the downtown and we announced the next meeting, which is May 2nd here. I'd also like to thank the city of West Bend, or the West Bend School District for providing the city with an alternate location site and also thank Jacob Muller for filling in for our executive directory, did an outstanding job for his first time in the hot seat, so to speak. Any questions?
Thank you. Keep up the good work. And then we have a report by either Alderman Dolnick or Model regarding the Plan Commission meeting.
I'll take that one. Yeah, we did have a Planning Commission meeting on April 5th. The first item was a new, an additional discussion on the Killian site for the new car wash. He was in once and back again now discussing a driveway that he wanted to put in for an exit because we were really anticipating a lot of traffic coming through this car wash. And we did give the city engineer permission to review and approve the right-turn exit driveway upon a traffic analysis that was going to be done, if I'm remembering all that correctly, I think so. And then we had a public hearing for the consideration of a conditional use permit to operate a personal training studio as a major home occupation in the RS4, single-family in the RS4 single-family residential district at 509 Summit Drive. Elizabeth Steiner, she was present, and a gentleman that came to offer his approval during the public hearing, which someone mentioned may have been the first time that's actually ever happened. So, it was wonderful to hear from him. And, and that may have happened in the course of the beginning of the meeting as they met in the galley. I'm not sure, but it was nice to see that. Anyways, the, the next item was a lot certified survey map creating a lot in an outlook, outlot located on the south side of Forge Place, east of South River Road by the city of West Bend, and that is relating to Kettle Marine Metal Products. Again, we're happy to have them joining us. Discussion item was the last bit of business, and it was a recommendation that set a public hearing for a change in the recommended land use from commercial and industrial in the 2020 comprehensive plan for the city of West Bend, for land located north of Wingate Street and west of North Trenton Road by the city of West Bend. That's the area behind Piggly Wiggly, and there's not a whole lot of interest as commercial, so. And that was about it. Any questions?
Sounds great. And then we're on to our farewell messages from all of us that are departing. So, I'll pass time quick over to Alderman Erns, if you have anything you'd like to say.
Um, no.
Be soon.
Yep.
It's been fun.
Yeah, it has. Alderman Kayler?
I'll say just a couple of quick words. First of all, thanks to all of the citizens of this fine city that supported me over the last years. All of our mayor and fellow alderpersons that I've served with, thank you. And to our wonderful city employees, many of you which I worked with on a personal basis or in a committee, thank you all for your support over the years, and thanks to everybody, and good luck in the future.
Thank you. And as customary, I'll be a little bit more long-winded here. First off, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak with you one last time. Over my years of service, I've been able to connect and get to know many of our fellow residents, and one such resident, his name is Mark. Mark is a handicapped individual who lives along one of our busy streets and uses public transportation or his motorized wheelchair to get around. My first year in office, he called me to congratulate me on my election, and right away followed up with a request. The pandemic was alive and well, and he said, "Mayor, I need internet to video chat with a family member. What do I do?" So, right away, I let him know about the public access that was available at our library. The next time he called, he said, "Mayor, the sidewalk by my house is too bumpy, and I get stuck in my wheelchair. Do something about it." So, as normal, I forwarded his request to our inspection and public works departments who got on it right away. One of the last times he called, he said, "I fell out of my bed and was stuck in my room, but don't worry, I didn't call you first." But, he did, I did want to say thank you to our police and firefighters who came to help and check up on me. So, I hope you noticed a theme here. While the resident knew and desired to call the mayor for help, I knew that it was my job to connect him to the right person to get the job done. With my job as the quarterback, we as elected officials are only as strong as the staff that we have to support us. I'm proud of all the opportunities that I gave our residents, businesses, nonprofits, and visitors to know who to call. Whether it was a ribbon cutting or a festival at Regner, I hope that my legacy is that I was present in our community. I can't believe it's been only three years. Three years ago, the pandemic had just started, and there was a lot of uncertainty and opinions on how to move forward. But despite that, we persevered. We supported our public safety divisions, renegotiating fairer contracts, and rightsizing our fire department. We invested $13 million into bettering our roads and infrastructure. We boomed with economic development, creating residential, commercial, and industrial wins that we haven't seen in years. And we celebrated the plethora of events, festivals, activities, and of course, the Riverwalk that we enjoy right here in West Bend. It has been my greatest honor to serve as your mayor over this time. So, now, some quick advice before I leave. It is both okay to ask important critical questions and trust staff. It's both okay to support low taxes and support quality services, and it's okay to disagree as long as you move forward together. I'm looking forward to cheering with all of you from the sidelines and wish the best of luck to our incoming mayor and city council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to have been able to serve you here in the great city of West Bend. Thank you. Thank you. Well, on that note, I'll open up if there's any other comments.
Thank you, Mayor Jenkins. It's been great working with you.
Absolutely.
I look forward to seeing you on the sidelines cheering for us. That'll be interesting to watch.
For sure.
And Alderman Kayler, Alderman Erns, it's been lovely working with you guys as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, sir?
Yes. As council president, I want to thank you, Chris, for working under you. Anytime I had any issues or any questions, you were always there for me. I learned an awful lot from you from the three years. I feel a lot more comfortable where I am because of you, so I want to thank you very much for trusting in me and for working with me. Alderman Erns, Alderman Kayler, it has been an honor to work with you those last two years here on the council. You've been a great asset to the council, and I hate to see you lose, but good luck in the future, as well as you, Kristoff. Good luck in your future. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'd like to also thank all three of you for your service. It's been an honor working with all of you. We haven't always disagreed. We haven't always agreed either, so. There's been a, it's been a true experience. And then I would like to, on a different note, I would like to encourage people to continue to support our downtown businesses and bars and restaurants. And, and I can tell you from having gone at various times of the day, that getting around downtown is not a problem. Parking has not been a real issue, at least, you know, in the times I've been there. So, it's, it's well worth spending time downtown. Get to know these guys. They're, they're fun places. Thank you.
Yeah, they are. Thank you. Anything else? Going once, going twice? Well, for the last time, having no further business for the common council, I'll adjourn by the call of the chair. Have a great night.